Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. I'll call our meeting to order and I'll go to Councilman Chip Turner for our invocation. Chip, if you would, please.
Put your hands with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gracious day, your love and your mercy. We ask you to be with us and be with this council and help us make the right decisions for our citizens and our city. We ask that you be with those who are harmed and damaged by Hurricane Florence. Be with those who have lost their homes and lost all their belongings and be with those who has lost and be with the families of those who lost their lives. I ask you to go with us tonight, help us make the right decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I'll rise for our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation's ground, and to this liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the Graham City Council. We appreciate everybody being here tonight and rest assured, everybody that wants to speak will get an opportunity to do so. The first thing we're going to do, we're going to talk to our city manager who is going to introduce Mary Fawcett. Frank, if you would.
We'll put Mary on the spot first thing. Mary Fawcett is our recently appointed downtown development coordinator. I think this is what, week four? Beginning of week four?
If only, right?
Yeah.
The beginning of week three.
Week three? Okay. Yeah, who's counting? But nevertheless, Mary comes to us from a neighboring jurisdiction where she gained some valuable experience and we're happy to have her here and Mary's also a resident of Graham.
Yes, the mayor council, it's my privilege to be here and now to be an employee with the city of Graham. In these first 12 days, I've walked and talked across the city and started to meet some of our business owners and I look forward to the coming days of getting to meet all of them. So, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to presenting projects to you in the future and just stand by, great things are on the horizon.
Thank you, Mary, and welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to our consent agenda. A is approval amendment September the 4th. B is approval amendment September the 19th. C is tax releases. D, approve First United Methodist Church's request to close East Market Street. E is approve Graham Historical Museum Advisory Board Statement. And F is approve Graham Recreation and Parks Request for October 11th, 2018 to serve as a rain date for the Thursday at 7 concert. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Great. Brian, thank you. Now, go to the ball field. Take Mary with you. She doesn't have her hat. Next, we have old business public hearing, home occupation in the CZ AM 1806, request by Kevin Ingold to amend the Development Ordinance, Article 4, Division 6, Section 10.135, to permit home occupations within a conditionally zoned residential. Aaron, are you handling this, please?
I suppose I am.
Yes, sir.
I didn't realize Nathan wasn't here. But this item was on the agenda for council to consider last month. Prior to that, the planning board had tabled the item because the applicant was not present. Due to the storm, we ended up not having a planning board meeting this past time. So, because of the timing, it comes back to city council. So, what you have before you is the request for the home occupations in conditionally zoned residential areas, basically because we don't allow them currently, but we do allow them in our other residentially zoned properties. So, what this would do is we basically allow it for all residentially zoned properties, including the conditionally zones.
Thanks, sir. Question for the staff, Melody, please.
Yes, sir.
Griffin.
But it's also allowing it in B1, B2, B3, is that correct? In the proposed language?
Correct.
I don't have the vote.
Yeah, it does. There are residences in those districts as well.
Looking.
No, I'm good.
Yep, please.
Aaron, home occupation, I mean, is this to give everyone the by right for a barber shop in their home or accounting business in their home? What do you mean by home occupation? Define that for me.
We actually define it in our Development Ordinance. There are certain criteria that an applicant would have to meet in order to operate a home occupation, a certain amount of square footage that they could use. You would typically see uses such as offices or in some cases, other uses that would be non-intense type uses that would be considered a home occupation. But we do have criteria that spelled out in our Development Ordinance which a person would have to meet in order to operate it.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can go next to one that does have a home occupation, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, so, Aaron, originally, the applicant, do you know which, do we have the information on which zone they were located in that generated this need for change? Do we know what the zone was that they were operating a home occupation in?
It's at a challenge and I think it's CM, I want to say it's CM XR.
So, it was under a conditional rezoning?
Correct.
It's under conditional zone?
Right, that subdivision is a conditionally zoned property.
And we know the applicant may be able to answer this as well, what the applicant's use was, that they were, was it a home office they were using at the time there?
They would like to use it for a home office.
Okay, great. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody from the floor want to speak on this or question? Yes, Tom, come up, please. Give us your name and address, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Tom Boni, Alamance News, Downtown Graham, 114 West Elm Street, Wextonville is the residential address. My basic question, is the applicant here for this item?
No, I don't see Buster anywhere.
Okay. I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor, does the city council have a policy on when you deal with issues when the applicant is not here versus when you don't?
It's really up to the subject matter. This is trying to get the city into one bunch. We allow it everywhere else and they have found some districts that were left out when this thing, they didn't check the box. There's also Broad Acres, I believe, is the area that's not allowed, is that right?
Allen, Shamrock Valley.
There's just a few places that this was not considered and it's to allow somebody like Lee, who runs an office out of his house, to use that as an office. Otherwise, it would be illegal for them to use it as a home office.
I have no sort of substantive issue with the question or with the change. My question, though, is the procedure and just the consistency of when the council proceeds and when you don't, when somebody's not here.
Right.
I mean, the normal sort of practice would seem to be, you know, if you don't care enough to come about something you asked for, and this applicant didn't come to the first planning board, second planning board was canceled, was not here for the last meeting, even though y'all were going to postpone it apparently anyhow, in other words, I just don't understand how the council decides to proceed on things when nobody is here to speak on it.
Granted, except this is a no-brainer. This is making everything the same. So, even though Kevin's not here, Buster's his nickname, Kevin's not here, this is right, we need to go ahead and do this, whether or not with his name on it or my name on it, either way, we need to do this.
All right. I just will probably ask you about it on a future occasion when I'm betting you don't deal with an item that the person is not.
If it's got the same weight of purpose and the same weight of rightness, yes, we would probably do it. Normally, you're right, we've sent things and voted against things and postponed things because somebody didn't show up, as you well know.
All right. And that's what I don't understand is the.
Mr. Boni, this is a public hearing like many other requests. However, this one is for a request that has general application throughout the city, throughout many zoning districts, have the same effect. An individual requested it, but it has a general application. Other items that come for our council, special use permits or rezonings for a particular lot, there are items, there are things that the council might want to know from the applicant. A special use permit especially, it's the burden of the applicant to present evidence that they satisfy the conditions spelled out in their ordinance. So, there are some differences between various requests.
I think if we didn't vote on it tonight, the city would bring it back next month for us to vote on it with their name on it, with the city's name on it, as an improvement for our ordinances.
All right. I would just say that the difference is rather striking.
I don't think it is.
To casual observer.
Okay. Well, you helped straighten it out for us, so, anyway. Anybody else want to speak on this? If not, we will close the public hearing, we'll talk about it among ourselves. Lee, have you got something?
I do. I just want to bring this up to the council. I don't think this is conflict, but I'll leave it up to the council's discretion whether it is or not, but currently, under construction with the building, then I'm going to have a home office in. It is in the B1 district.
I don't think this affects.
Okay. I mean, it's not a financial gain by no means by voting on this, but I just want to disclose that because currently, it's not allowed in a B1.
What does everybody think?
I think he's perfectly fine.
Let's go with caution. Let's allow Lee to.
I can live with that, too.
Okay, is that all right with everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Then I make a motion to be allow Lee to recuse himself.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise.
Do I have to step away again?
Please.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Oh, wow.
Okay. Now, with that said, what does everybody think? Do you have a problem with Mr. Ingold not being here, even though this is something that the city will bring back to us?
To me personally, this is a generalization. It's not just for one individual. It's for a generalization.
Y'all think?
We're cleaning up something. That's all we're doing. We're making an editorial change and cleaning something up that needs to be cleaned up because we left it out. So, whether you were right, whether Mr. Ingold was here to put this before us, I guarantee you, we would request to come back next time because we know it needs to be cleaned up. So, one way or the other, we need to get it cleaned up.
Griffin, what do you think?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. With that being said, I need a motion. I'll move you to page 23 on your agenda and ask for a motion from the council.
Mayor, I move that the text amendment be approved, that the text amendment is consistent with the Graham 2035 Comprehensive Plan, action is reasonable and in the public interest. Because the proposed amendment will allow for a home to be used by the citizen to a higher standard while not disrupting the residential character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank y'all. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Thank you. Tom, thank you for your input. All right, next, we have vote three for education resolution during the workshops for the.
Mr. Kimery.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll leave you over there. Come on back up, Lee. I'm moving right along here, wasn't I? I know.
Makes you feel left out, doesn't it?
Have I lifted you up twice? I don't believe we vote to bring him back up, do we? I think he automatically comes up.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
Oh, I would have let him sit out there.
I just didn't want to interrupt proceedings.
Now, vote three for education resolution. We have nobody here to present this and they asked me to present it, so I will. And I wrote during the workshops for our comprehensive plan, most every resident that attended the schools were number one problem in Graham. The improvements that the funding received, most of the Graham people go to, either Graham Southern or Eastern High Schools. The bonds will recreate a new high school that citizens of Graham would attend. There are over 2,000 new dwelling units that have been approved in Graham in the last couple of years and most of which are in the high school zones that are already overcrowded. Most of this bond reflects directly at the city of Graham, a new high school, improvements to ACC and improvements to Graham High School. So, what's not to like about this, other than the tax increase? Plus, the sales tax addition to it puts some of the burden on the travelers passing through our county. Now, I'll read the resolution. Let me get to it here. It says, "Whereas Alamance County Board of Education has proposed a bond package of 150 million for the purpose of updating and expanding the capacity of Alamance Burlington School System. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Alamance County College, ACC, has proposed a bond package of 39.6 million for new and expanded facilities and programs. Whereas Alamance County Board of Commissioners has approved both measures and those full amounts to be put before the citizens of Alamance County for a vote on Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018. Whereas the Commissioners have limited the amount of property tax increase to a maximum of .788 for 100 and approved for the inclusion on the ballot, a .25 increase in local sales tax as a means to generating revenue for the bond debt repayment and thus reducing the impact on the local property tax. Whereas the city of Graham supports improvement in economic development opportunities and the overall quality of life in the community through enhancing local educational institutions and their facilities, programs and services. Whereas these planned improvements are essential elements to be adopted, a strategic plan for both ABSS and the ACC to offer a world-class education system as envisioned by the citizens of Alamance County, necessary for educating and training the 21st century workforce. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Graham, on behalf of the Graham citizens, fully supports both bond measures and the local sales tax increases for revenue generation as being fundamental and transformational investments for the future of Alamance County in the second day of October, 2018." So, I'll go to the board. Griffin, I'll start with you. What is your thoughts on this?
I'm 100% support of this resolution and Graham supporting it. We've worked for three years with the school system, with that board, trying to figure out a solution for Graham and for our kids in the public sector and I think this supports it. You can make the arguments of repurposing old schools, but I think that's looking back, not looking forward to a new facility that doesn't require the ongoing maintenance. I think it houses new kids, it supports the redistricting efforts that ABSS has put so much time into doing. I could not be more in support of it.
There. Chipper?
I definitely support the schools, Graham school system, I mean, not the Graham school system, but the Graham schools, new high school, I'm in support of that. I'm not sure, I'm kind of torned, do we want to get into this resolution thing? I don't, we do have a dog in the fight, but this is really not our fight. I mean, not our place, you know, this is going to be on the county commissioners, that's what they're elected to do. And again, let me reiterate, I do support the schools, but I don't know, do we really want to get into this?
Yeah. You add into what Councilman Turner said, regardless of where our support is on this issue individually, it, I kind of respect the decision that the county commissioners made, it was a very difficult decision, but they decided to allow every voter to have a voice in this matter. I respect that in the sense that right here, the problem I have with the language in here is that the city of Graham is endorsing a political vote on an issue on behalf of all its citizens. That troubles me because as an elected political body, I'm not so sure that it's our role to advocate for a vote on an issue and taking a side on a vote. I think we're kind of entering into some dangerous territory, in my opinion, endorsing that.
Thanks, sir. Melody?
I see both sides and I think that there is some concern about the political side of it. However, what is even stronger than that to me is the support of it and I think that for the governing bodies, the local governing bodies, to be supportive of the school system at this point is important to the public and for us to say as leaders that we are in support of improving our school system. And I think that's important for the public to know.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll go to the floor. Anybody want to speak on this? Tom?
Yes, sir.
Name and address again, please.
Okay, Tom Boni, again, Alamance News, 114 West Elm Street, business address, home address, 1240 Gemstone Court, Graham, but Wextonville. Mr. Mayor, I certainly share the concerns that Councilman Turner and Kimery have raised, but more importantly, even than that, I want to come to some of the text of what you read out. I disagree with the underlying enthusiasm for this bond referendum. First of all, factually, I'm not aware of anything that says that residents of the city of Graham are going to be going to the new high school. The description given by the school system is that the crowding at Eastern High School and Southern High School is to be alleviated by a new high school between the two and the only descriptions thus far have dealt with those two schools and those two zones. There's been no description that I'm aware of that suggests that residents of the city of Graham are to be a part of that rezoning.
I'm rewriting it now.
The concern that I also have is the tremendous damage that this does to existing Graham High School. I think it is absolutely outrageous that Graham and Cummings as well are to be shuttled aside and stripped of their traditional role as a traditional high school and become really what amounts to a second-rate type high school, art center in the case of Cummings and some sort of vocational slash municipal government slash all sorts of different names the superintendent has given it, but it's not a regular high school. It means that residents of the city of Graham, who don't wish to enroll in either of those two programs, are going to have much farther to travel, parentheses, if they're allowed to go to a different high school, which also, to me, is very troublesome in terms of its impact on the city. But in the factual part, I think it's the fourth whereas that you cover. And you started by saying the Commissioners have limited the tax impact, something to that effect. That is not factually correct, Mr. Mayor. The Commissioners, and I'd like to give the council members a copy of a letter that gets into the detail of this. The Commissioners have stated that they expect the tax result to be a certain level, but there is no actual limit, not in the text of the bond referendum and not in the text of the resolution that was passed by the Commissioners. That is simply not in there. The additional difficulty is that even the expression of the tax rate is not actually correct, the way it is written, the city manager or finance people will verify, actually expresses it as though it's a 78 cent tax increase, because it says .788, dollar sign, .788. To be accurate, it should be .0788. But in either case, it's not a limit. It is merely a expectation and estimate, if you will. I quote in the letter from the county manager who used the phrase "estimate," but the resolution itself from the Commissioners said it is what they expect based on the situation they looked at back in March when it was first before them. I think the, I'll also come into what I think is the last page in there. At the Burlington City Council last night, this same subject came up and before I interjected any thoughts or opinions, Councilman Bob Ward raised some of the same questions and issues that the Councilman Turner and Kimery raised and in particular about having its council going on record expressing favorability on a certain tax rate or on a sales tax increase. And basically, the last page is what he passed out as an alternative for that council to consider. Now, as I understood it, there was some discussion of one council member who wanted to add some language about children, students, this is great for them, something to that effect. And I do not have whatever, if anything, was added to it, which at least they were scheduled to consider tonight. But I think the advantage to his shorter version, first of all, it eliminates the inaccuracies in the description of the Commissioners. It also eliminates the position of having the council endorse the sales tax increase. But I would concur with the reservations expressed that it's really not the place of the council to express this at all. What's the point? This is not in y'all's jurisdiction. Not any aspect of it is in your jurisdiction. And so, then the question comes, especially, Mayor, I didn't know that this is the way this was going to unfold, but in other words, when somebody asks for it to be put on the agenda and then boom, it's on and you're going to lead the discussion about it without having somebody here to represent them. So, let's maybe y'all submit something for next month, so let's have y'all go on record one way or the other about the six constitutional amendments that are going to be on the ballot. I think we need photo ID in North Carolina. I think we need a ceiling on income tax. So, is the council willing to let's go on record about some of those issues? Why this one and not those? Why any of them? So, I think it's a quite questionable and a questionable priority to proceed down this road and, but if you're going to, at least be accurate in what you're describing. But it is not accurate to say, well, first of all, this part's opinion, yours versus mine, is its impact and wisdom for Graham High School. I think it is a terrible impact for Graham High School. But that's an opinion. But it's not an opinion about what the position of the Commissioners was in adopting the bond referendum questions in terms of the estimate versus an actual limit. The bond people keep putting that out in a lot of their materials, including this sample template resolution that they want all the local councils to adopt, but it's simply not accurate. I'd be glad to answer any.
No, I'm fine with you. I'm fine. I'll get the guys to change the fourth one to drop the dollar sign first off and .0788, what you're referring to. And that is a typographical thing, I think. Isn't that right? Okay. This was sent to us, so yeah, you're exactly right and we appreciate that. But this does reflect highly on Graham and yes, we have, we have received the information from the citizens of Graham during our comprehensive plan that this, we need some help.
Let me just address that just a minute, Mayor. I understand everyone's desire to have better schools, better education in Graham. And if I thought this money going in all of the directions that it's planned would do that, I might be for it, but it is not. 67 million, almost half of it, is going for a new high school, which will have no impact at all on Graham. To be honest, contrary to your description. The impact that it will have, as outlined by the school board and the former superintendent, whose apparent, you know, plan this is being put forward, will be to change the nature of Graham High School and in such a way that, in my opinion, will not reflect well on the city, will not be an improvement in education, will not have any sort of improvement in the academic level of students from Graham or anywhere else who might be at Graham High School. And that's the most disappointing part.
I think what you don't realize is they throw more programs and Jay's sitting here, there's been more money spent at Graham High School, throwing programs at it to improve it and it has not done it. There's got to be some other way to go. And building a new high school, making Graham into the fire academy and the police academy, we're trying, we're trying everything we can. And we put our, we put our money where our mouth is. We're building a park out there that we were, we want the school to be close to that park. We, that's where we want it to be. And when, if this passes, then yes, we will, we'll go to the school board and ask them to build it as a Graham High School, I think. You know, if the board agrees with that. We want the best for the citizens of Graham. We're not getting it right now. Right now, we're getting an inferior school that will not improve unless something desperate happens. And I'm going to let Jay come up here and talk to us if you don't mind. Jay, come up and say what you want to say. He was looking, Jay's son played football at Graham and Jay has been a Graham advocate all along. Now, he does have a problem, the same problems you have with changing Graham High School, but I think he knows and he realizes we need to change.
Yeah, so, I'm Jay Martin, 405 Ivy Road in Graham. I'm in full favor of the bond and direction it's going. To my knowledge, every city resident in Graham will attend the new school. I don't think any part of Graham does not attend, to my knowledge. So, I think as far as where Graham High School's going, where Trallenger Road facility is right now, is.
Come up to the mic, Jay. We're losing you.
That, that facility has a positive direction. My always fight and I will to the day I die, that, and I'm not knocking other facilities, but I know that it can lose attention and become a situation such as seller's gun, things like that, a rundown school and not looked after. That's my only point of care and now I do hope the new. And I do hope the new school would be Graham High School. Will it be Red Devils or not? I don't know that either. Would the old facility go back to Central? I think that provides a lot of the general of Graham, where we've been in the last 60 years, to what we would be next.
Jay, let me ask you a question. If this new school is built and goes to Graham High School, would you support it like you did the old Graham High School?
Absolutely. I mean, I won't have any kids in it at that time. My last is in a senior at Graham High School now, but that would be the only reason of hours of involvement. Not that I wouldn't be there. Would I be there as much as I, I mean, a lot of people think I worked there.
I know.
And I don't. Well, I do, but it's free. So would I be, yes, I will support it. Will I be there to support it? Will I be active? But whatever, it's only us, all of us, as our kids are moving on, would be the only reason.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak on this? Okay, now, can we change the resolution to read, drop the dollar sign and put point zero seven eight eight? I think the way the commissioners meant it to be. And Griffin, I think you wanted to comment.
I did, to Mr. Boni's comment, that none of the kids in the public sector would go to the new high school. That's incorrect. According to the current redistricted program for the high schools, I think it was voted on in January or February of 2017, Graham and Cummings would not be traditional high schools, they would be options, alternative campuses for specialized programs. All of the kids in Graham would be routed to either Eastern, Southern, or the new high school, based on that redistricted plan that was approved by the school board at that time. I just want to correct that. That's often said, that what's going to become Graham High School, that will be an option with viable programs for kids all over this county. We hope kids that have never been to Graham get to come to Graham and participate in some of the STEM stuff, the municipal training, the fire safety. My understanding, the fire safety program's already breaking records in the county and state, but I couldn't support it more. I think if you've supported and advocated for schools for three or four years, understood that that's our biggest problem, and now you're afraid for the political implication of advocating when it's actually on the ballot, I think that's a problem. That's not what I was elected to do. That's not what I feel like I'm sitting here to do. When it's something, when something needs changing and other ways haven't changed it, I think we move in that direction. We speak, we get behind it. That's what I'm going to do. That's what I will do.
Chip, allow him, you want to speak?
I'm fine right now.
I would, I would. You know, this is, this entire conversation is going down the road talking about particulars, and those particulars goes back to the reason that I have concern with the way this is worded, and that is that we have no control over it. We really don't. All we can do is advocate. All we can do is be there for the city of Graham. And we went to the school board meetings, we spoke, we've advocated. There's no doubt that we are all in support of a better school system in the city of Graham. It's just the problem I have is I was reading this resolution, going down through here, going, okay, 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 and got to the last paragraph and went, wait a minute, are we speaking for every citizen in the city of Graham? Or do we have the right to voice a support and tell that the city of Graham is getting behind something that is political in nature? That's my, that was my biggest problem. Not that we don't need to improve the school system in the city of Graham, in Alamance County in general, simply the city of Graham on behalf of Graham citizens fully support both bond measures. That's a strong statement to say that we're taking, we're asking every voter in the city of Graham to go out and support this. This is a political issue and particularly one we don't have any control over. We're arguing about the particulars or something because we have no idea exactly what those are, other than the information we get, the meetings we attend, and what Tom and the Times News publicizes.
Would therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Graham on behalf of Graham citizens, would that solve your problem?
You're asking on behalf of Graham citizens that every citizen would support this?
No, I didn't say that. I said, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Graham on behalf of the Graham citizens. Anytime you act, you act on behalf of the Graham citizens.
We do. We do.
All right. Would that answer your question? Think about changing it that way.
Before I can endorse it, I'd like to see the entire thing rewritten so that I could actually, are you going to, are we going to try to attempt that here?
Yes. We'll do it right now and get it done, one way or another. Would that help you?
Take out on behalf of the Graham, of citizens of Graham.
Okay.
I mean, if you want, if the city of Graham wants to endorse it and this council wants to.
Okay, let me read. Therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Graham fully supports both the bond. Did that read right?
I got a problem with the whole last paragraph because city of Graham is all the citizens and residents. It just doesn't.
If I say the city council of the city of Graham, it eliminates all this, didn't eliminate the citizens, it puts it on the city council, not the citizens. All right. Therefore be it resolved that the Graham city council fully supports both bond measures and local sales tax. Or come up with some one that you like.
Read that again for me, Mayor, please.
The city council, well, not, we're leaving out the city of Graham. Be it resolved that Graham city council fully supports both bond, we're leaving out on behalf of the Graham citizens. We're saying the city council fully supports both bond measures. All right, with that. Darcy, can you read that back to me, please? Make sure we got where we want to be.
As I understand it, therefore be it resolved that the Graham city council fully supports both bond measures.
That, put it where you want it to be.
I believe we're getting closer. Okay.
Suit y'all. Got to suit everyone or suit a majority.
May I get my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great.
Well, make sure Lee's done. He's still got the floor.
I'll release it.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Great. All right. My comment to that, I would have approved it just like it was. I'll approve it as it is and what we're recommending, but I would have approved it as it is. My point, in fact, is that we are elected on behalf of the citizens of Graham, and it is our job. That is exactly what we are up here to do. Are we going to get every citizen to agree with everything that we pass? Absolutely not. So I think that's a stretch to even begin to think that. I think that we are here to represent them in their best interest, and I think that's our job, and we need to be strong enough to do that.
But would you support the measure as?
I'll be happy to.
All right. Any other changes? Now that we went through everybody.
I'd like to comment on that, if I may.
Go ahead.
I don't think it has anything to do, we make decisions every day that we have full control over, and we make those decisions in regards to whether it's for the benefit of our citizens in this city. This issue right here, again, we have no control over. We are stepping out and taking a political position and asking our citizens to support a vote at the election booth in November. That bothers me. It bothers me that we're advocating, whether that be a political figure, as Tom mentioned, whether that's a political, I mean, why don't we take a position on abortion or gun rights? We don't because we have no control over that measure. Is it our position to be leaders and to stand up here and take positions on things we have no control over? No, it's not. We should take positions on things we do have control over, and we should make those changes. This one here, we are answering for every voter in the city of Graham by telling them they should support this measure. The county commissioners realized that this was important enough that everyone should have a votes, a voice, and go out and vote. They did not take it upon themselves to say, we're going to pass this measure, we're going to approve this measure. No, they said, every voter should have a voice on this matter. We're taking that voice away by saying you should vote this way. That bothers me. It has nothing to do with whether we have enough leadership to lead. It has everything to do with the fact that everyone should have a voice that goes out and votes on this matter, and we should not tell them what that voice should say.
I agree, Lee. I agree in parts of that, okay? I think that it is our responsibility as leaders, we've all been individually involved with attending these meetings and voicing our opinions. I think it is something to the public that the public needs to see us in support, that we need to support every little item on here and say that every little person, every person in this community is going to vote for the improvement of schools. Our school is involved in this, and I think it is important. To say that we have no dog in the fight is not right. To say that Graham is somehow going to benefit from all this, all the adjustments, if you've ever been in these schools, these high schools in particular, they are trashed and they need renovations badly. I think if this is the way for us to get it done and for us to take care of our citizens, I think that's what we have to do. It's a group package. It's not individualized just for Graham. I think that we have to do it based on it is a group package. We don't, we need to show support of improving our schools somehow. If this is the way that it comes out, I think it's up to us to do that.
Emily, let me just emphasize that there is no doubt you're right. The school buildings are in dire need, dire need of renovations. We need new school system. Things have not been done the way that I think they should be done, and obviously, this council thinks they should be done. I couldn't agree with that more. I'm just simply making a point on a political issue that I think is very important. That's it. Not whether our school system needs improvement, not whether we need to do everything we possibly can to improve it in the city of Graham.
Chip wants to add to this. Chip?
Yeah, Melly just brought up something. I misspoke a minute ago when I said, we don't have a dog in the fight. We are in this fight for better schools. I'm just stating that come November 6th, it doesn't matter what we do here.
Well, that's true.
And that's all I'm saying is, I don't think we should get into a political issue here. Not that I don't support schools.
If you're not willing to get into a political issue for the single most important issue that our citizens raised, I just, I think that's, I don't know. I don't know what I think it is, but I just.
I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree with you. I don't. I'm just saying, come November 6th, it don't matter what we do with this.
It might.
All right, that's full support, Mike. Let's hold off a minute and go to the floor and see if anybody else wants to speak from the floor. Anybody else?
Miss Mayor, whereas, or saying, I heard you make one change, but I'm not sure I heard you make another.
I'm sorry, read, we, one, two, three, four. We dropped the dollar sign first, and then we moved it to zero point zero seven eight eight.
All right. What about the part that says the commissioners have limited? That is not factually accurate. Other things we've discussed and y'all have discussed or opinions, that's not accurate. I'd hate to see the city.
Okay, okay. Let's put suggested the amount, suggested the amount of property tax increase. How about that? We discussed. On paragraph, okay, paragraph four, the commissioners have discussed the amount of the property tax increase, and that didn't flow. Commissioners have suggested the amount of the property tax increase to a maximum.
You may not want to use it, but I gave you a paragraph that may help you.
I haven't read it, and bringing stuff for us to read here doesn't work because, you know, we'd have to have it last week. What did it say?
The.
What was, is there a one-word change?
It's, the commissioners have estimated.
Okay, that's good. Okay, that's fine.
It's on the next to last paragraph of page two at the end. It is expected that any increase in taxes will not see.
That's fine. That's a good word. Whereas the commissioners have expected the amount of the property tax increase to be a maximum.
That's there, and then at the top of page three is my suggestion, Brad, you can correct it within the resolution, but either, any way you can correct it would be an improvement.
All right. Let's go to one, two, three, four. The commissioners have actual expression of expected impact, that's a good phrase, of the property tax increase to be a maximum. All right. Whereas the commissioners have Eddie Darcy? Have expressed the expected impact of the property tax increase to be a maximum of dollar sign, zero point zero seven eight eight. Please read that back to us, if you would.
Whereas the commissioners have expressed an expected increase.
Impact.
An expected impact
of the property tax increase to a maximum of zero point zero seven eight.
All right, let me start one more time.
Please do.
Whereas the commissioners have expressed an expected impact of the property tax increase to a maximum of point zero seven eight eight per $100 and approved.
Okay, and that's dropping the dollar sign.
And dropping the dollar sign.
Good. Okay, thank you, Tom. Anybody else want to speak? Come up, Jay.
Don't need to introduce again. Thank you. I'm in support of all of you and all your works that you do, but even on this specific subject, I actually am supporting both halves very strongly towards Councilman Turner and Kimery. In the sense of where you're deciding, my suggestion to the wording on that is that in the best interest of the citizens of Graham or, you know, in looking after us, it's not encouraging us one way, but it establishes to what I think you all are saying in the sense that, in y'all's opinion, this is where we should be voting, but it's not saying what decisions are going to. Again, it'd be in some more deformed of saying in the best interest of the citizens of Graham.
I think we rewrote that just exactly the way you said it. It's different wording, but it's.
Yeah, something to that nature.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else want to speak on this? If you've painted bathrooms down the middle school, what do you think?
I'm good.
Okay, sir.
Mayor, you going to be looking for a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's once we're finished, and we'll reread it and make sure, did we reprint it? Are you all right with reading?
No, I'm just simply asking the procedure because this is simply a resolution that we're going to endorse or adopt, and whether it's going to go to an official vote or not because there's council members who don't, who seem to support it the way it was. I don't know. So I'm just, I'm just curious on how this.
Ask them if they support it the way it is, the way we've rewritten it.
But if you're going to go to a vote and not ask for a consensus, then someone can make a motion. Okay.
So he wants to know if y'all are all right with the way we've rewritten it. Darcy will read it, would you please?
Should we do that first?
Yes.
We want to read the whole thing or you just want to read paragraph four?
I want to read the changes. I want to read paragraph four and paragraph, the last, therefore be it resolved that.
Whereas the commissioners have expressed an expected impact of a property tax increase to a maximum of point zero seven eight eight per $100 and approved, for inclusion on the ballot, a 25% increase of the local sales tax as a means for generating revenue for bond debt repayment and thus reducing the impact of a local property tax and.
Okay. Let's take that one first. Does everybody understand that one and all right with it?
Yeah.
Okay, now, let's go to the very last one. I think that's the only one we had another problem with, therefore be it resolved.
Therefore be it resolved that the Graham city council fully supports both bond measures.
I don't know that we can say fully until we have to have a vote. Maybe we should say supports both bond measures. Or if it does not vote the way we think it's going to vote, then we'll say does not support the bond measures. So that one there is fluid, isn't it? What do you think? Should we leave fully in there or? I'm fine with it myself.
I don't want my name to be attached to anything that says we don't support a bond measure. That's not what's in front of us.
The word fully?
Yes.
Can go either way. I think we support it, we can support it when we lose the word fully. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Either way, it's going to say that we support.
All right. All right, so that's our changes. We have a consensus of changes, fine.
Yeah.
Okay. With that being said, I move you to.
There's not a motion, is there, Mayor?
I'm fixing to get you one. Page 24 on your agenda and ask for your motion plus the changes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the original resolution as proposed in the agenda is approved. is approved.
Can you repeat the motion?
He moved that the original resolution be approved. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna stop this right here before I ask for a vote. We have some problems with this that we'll be voting on that really is going to give us a problem. Are you still wanting a vote on it as a?
Got a motion and a second.
I know it does.
You said it was going to a vote, Mayor.
Okay, then I'll ask all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed likewise.
Aye.
And it passes as originally.
There.
The vote went three to two. Strange as it can be there. Okay. Next we go to ABC interlocal agreement amendment, and Keith, I'm going to you with this first.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Darcy has admonished me just speaking to the microphone while I did this. Little history about this, when I first had the pleasure to become the lawyer for the City of Graham almost ten years ago now, this was on my agenda ten years ago. Then our member, the Graham appointed members wanted to, they had gotten together and wanted to change the way the membership of the local ABC board was selected. So historically, the City of Graham did two members, City of Burlington did two members, and then Graham and Burlington each did a member together, so five members. And it was proposed that the City of Meven have that fifth member appointment because they were, they're a full member of the, so their council would appoint one member. We would still appoint two. The City of Burlington still appoint two. Well, it could never be brought up because at that time, Mr. Bateman was representing both the City of Meven and the City of Burlington, and so it languished until he retired, and Mr. Brown was hired at Meven, and then Mr. Bateman was still at Burlington for a while, two or three years as before they hired Mr. Huffman, but because he had formerly represented City of Meven, he had a conflict if this came up, a legal conflict. Anyway, this draft as before you now was produced by me almost a year ago, and it's gone back and around and around between the lawyers. It just restates the interlocal agreement for the cities and the appointment of their, of your ABC commission. It knows a long and convoluted history about how the ABC commission became into effect before nineteen seventy-one. You had to have a private law, not a public law, but in nineteen seventy-one, they created the statute called the interlocal agreement statute, the purpose of which was to avoid having private laws in general, so the cities could enter into contracts with each other. And that, and now this is the result. It had been amended a couple of times when Meven was brought in. So this is the Third Amendment and the first complete restatement of the interlocal agreement. It allowed, the money will be split the very same way it has been split. Actually, Swebsenville is a member now, but they don't have a store, so they don't really get a share of the revenue because they don't have a physical store that they, excuse me, that they paid for, constructed. So from here, if you approve that and all of this form and all the other cities approve this particular restatement of the agreement, the City of Burlington will have two appointments for, on this board. The City of Graham will still have two appointments on this board, but the City of Meven will have one appointment on your ABC.
Questions for staff? Chip, start with you, please.
No question.
Lee, please.
I do, so ten years, Keith? What's been going on for ten years?
I just told you.
How many times did that get moved around on the desk?
Not being moved around on my desk was, we were at a standstill because, generally because of Mr. Bateman.
Right. So Meven has had a seat at the table for a while. We're just cleaning it up to make sure that they're going to get officially paperwork.
Always had a seat at the table.
Right.
They didn't have a board appointment, and they want a board.
But that board member has been voting even though it's not in the bylaws, right? Correct?
I'm not sure the City of Meven, they may have approved a selection, but they didn't have a vote.
It was Fache, wasn't it? That was the Meven representative on the ABC board for?
He was the chairman.
It was chair.
He acted as a chairman.
Yeah. And it was Graham and Burlington that collectively elected, appointed him to that chairship, which now with this, with all the new information in the interlocal agreement, we will have our two, Burlington will have their two, Meven will have one, and then the board will pick for a one-year term the chair among themselves. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
I can spread that question.
Yeah. So explain to me about Swebsenville. Swebsenville adopted Liquor by the Drink, so they come on board officially unofficially.
Right.
They do not have an ABC store.
They don't have a store.
Do they even have a restaurant that serves alcoholic beverages?
I had the slightest idea.
Headquarter heels.
So, but you stated they do not get a portion of the proceeds. They do, don't they?
Proceeds are split based on the sales at your, the gross overalls, excuse me.
Okay.
Sixty-five percent of the total sales are split among the municipalities in a pro-rata based on your investment. The City, I don't have any store. Meven have two stores, and we have two stores.
Meven has two, but I'm not sure if one of them's not on the Orange County side.
But, so it creates a.
Only one.
One store.
Only one Alaman, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
One's on the Orange County side.
That's right. There's one on the Orange County side, and they split some of that revenue too, based on their investment in the, in the structure. And Swebsenville does not have an investment in a structure, but they still get reimbursed based on the leaders.
I got you. So they do get a little bit of.
Volume of sales.
Revenue off of it.
Little tiny bit until they build a store.
Even if they don't even have a restaurant or an establishment that has Liquor by the Drink, just because they have adopted Liquor by the Drink. If they do get a store, is there a point in the future that they will come back to us and want a seat at the table?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I can't. They will, they may want to amend your interlocal agreement again to change the way that the, to have a sever member board and, you know, to change the size of the board and get, I don't, I can't speak to them.
So that's kind of the trigger is when you get that ABC store, and it kind of gives you that.
Best of money to build a store.
Yeah, okay. How is, just out of curiosity, how is it that ABC determines location of new stores?
I have the slightest idea.
The board does.
The local board, like they just built the one down on fifty-four here in Graham.
Right.
I think the board, our local board is the one that picked that location. I don't think it had to be approved by Raleigh.
And I'm assuming they're looking at sales at other locations and where the need may be for another store, I would assume.
That's beyond my pay grade. I have the slightest idea how that.
Okay.
They petitioned by Gibsonville to build one there, and they turned them down.
I got you.
Because they were too close proximity to one in Gibsonville.
Okay.
And to keep their sales within the county.
Yeah, because our Hard Street location over there is, is, does very well. It seems to have very high sales from what I've always.
Because all the Liquor by the Drink people have to buy.
Have to buy. So it's got a storage facility.
Countywide.
Yeah.
Countywide.
So that pushes a lot out. Is that generating more revenue from City of Graham as a result of that?
I'm sure of it. Yeah. They get a percentage of all the sales.
Okay.
Gibsonville does have a store, but it's a Guilford store.
Right, but they wanted one in Alaman's. They wanted to grab the revenue of the people going to Guilford. I don't, I just know they petitioned the board to do it, and they said no.
That's all my questions. Thanks.
All the recitals here sets out the history of this interlocal agreement and our joint relationship together.
Melody, questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Griffin?
No.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Anybody from the floor want to speak on this? Okay. With that being said, I need to move you to page twenty-five on your agenda and ask for a motion from the board.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Third Amendment and the First reinstatement of interlocal agreement for merged Alaman's municipal alcoholic beverage control systems.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Larry Brooks will be excited. All right, next we have issues not on tonight's agenda, and we have Perry Slade, eight seventy-one, Border Lake Trail in Burlington wants to talk about the Mountain Valley extension. Welcome, ma'am. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My understanding is that you have heard from Mountain Valley, and I think it's very important that you hear from a landowner, so I'm here to do that.
We have not heard from Mountain Valley.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Heard from the others, your side of it.
Okay, I apologize. I was told that you had. Of course, they want to build this virtually seventy-five mile pipeline to extend from Chatham, Virginia and meet up with the pipeline that comes in on fifty-four across from Cherry Lane. And so doing that, they want to cross many landowners' land. My family's one of those, and I just think it's important that you hear our side of the story. I live on a farm, a farm that has been in my family eight generations off of Deep Creek Church Road, a couple miles out of Hope Dale, and, excuse me, everybody's story's different, but I have to share mine. The proposed original route, of which they are quick to tell us that the route is not determined, and it seems to change every few days with the alternative routes, but the original route is proposed to come diagonally through our farm. We have about a two-hundred-and-seventy-five acre farm that has been a dairy and tobacco farm. We are currently a hay farm, actively growing and selling hay to our community for horse and cattle. We also border the city lake, so we are on a watershed, and it proposes to just bisect our farm in half. Several reasons I object to the pipeline. As you well know, the county commissioners have already passed a resolution, and at some point, we wish we can get that out of you guys. But if nothing else tonight, I would encourage you to educate yourselves and find out what's being put out there about what is true and what is not. My family, we value our land. There is no price tag that could go for it. Like I said, I'm the eighth generation to live there. I have a daughter right now waiting to be old, had planned to be in a house by Christmas, but was scared to start digging footings and getting a deed when she wasn't sure where the pipeline would come across our land. But that's land we propose for our children and our grandchildren to use for their homes exactly as we do. There have been many financial opportunities for us in the past. Oh, my goodness. Golf courses, housing developments, wedding venues, one time they even wanted to put an airport out there on us. We don't want it. We just want to go in our road and be left alone and do what we've always done. It is, just seems to me that it is such an abuse of eminent domain that this company can come in and put in this pipeline for personal financial gain. It is not the government. It is them. They're an LLC, and they just want to make money. I don't think they really care if gas ever comes through it or not. I think they just want to build a pipeline. Virtually, if they did come though, what would it do to the value of our land? We are working hay farm. I have talked with the Steve Troxler Agriculture Commissioner in Raleigh and great length, and he's given me some leads to go with the agriculture route of trying to keep them off the farm. And another consideration we have is just the lack of validation of need. I have met with the Attorney General in Raleigh this summer, in June, trying to decide if there is a need for this pipeline or not. It kind of depends all on who you're listening to that day. Lots of studies say there's no need and we're good, and there's Progress Energy or whoever who say that we're going to be out of gas in 2021. And if that's the case, it looks to me like they would have started on this a long time ago. But that's where I'm asking you to research and improve what you're being told by us or by Mountain Valley, you know? Is there a need for this gas? I think probably the biggest issue of it all is the danger of it all. This gas is odorless and, you know, can't be seen, and I just have this horrible vision of my grandchildren one day riding down the road on their bicycles and this pipe blowing up. You can see explosions on the media almost any day. There was one just a few days ago. It is, will be a twenty-four inch pipe at fourteen hundred and something pounds of pressure per inch, and I just cannot imagine that coming between my house and my sister-in-law's house. You have about a mile radius there in a blow zone, so when it blows up, it takes out my entire family and all of our homes. There's eight of us out there on our farm, not to mention what it does to your watershed with your water. So I don't want this pipeline in my yard, and I think if you're honest, you don't want it in your yard either. So if you ever get to considering a resolution, I'd love to come back and talk to you, but certainly I challenge you tonight to investigate and find out the true facts about what's being told and what isn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Next we have Jeff Ikenjer. I'm not the first one to miss that one, am I?
You got it right.
Twenty-two thirty, Cherry Lane. Welcome, sir. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. It's good to be here. My name is Jeff Ikenjer. I do live on Cherry Lane, and I too was also hoping that the board would take a position like Alaman's County Commissioners has against the MVP project. It will bring this fracked natural gas from West Virginia and Pennsylvania to Virginia, North Carolina, ending just down the street from me at NC fifty-four. It has been sold as a critical requirement for this area's long-term growth and survival, but more and more, it seems like it's more about the growth and survival of the parent company, QT. They are not doing very well financially. I just looked at their, their stock prices, and while every, every stock seems to be going through the roof these days, there's just going down, 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 down to almost half, half their value over just a little over a year. We've also seen a lot of project cost overruns. There's a stop order currently from the regulating agency, FERC, which oversees the process, and that's in spite of the relaxed regulations that they had to, to construct this project up in West Virginia and Virginia. Plus, the investors have been promised a very healthy fourteen percent rate of return. Gosh, you wouldn't like that. And any future need for natural gas is also going to be made by another pipeline, which is coming through eastern North Carolina, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. So we already have one coming into North Carolina. Graham and Alaman's County residents could face higher rates because FERC allows for the passing on of construction costs to the end users. The landowners in the path also bear a large cost, seeing the current and future uses of their property, like Ms. Slade said, limited by the easements, which are secured through the use of eminent domain. Frankly, the use of eminent domain for the purpose of private, private company and its investors to make a profit just seems wrong to me. That was the, the single biggest reason that motivated the Alaman's County Commissioners. On a bigger picture, we have also seen the effects of global warming, stronger storms, more flooding, more extreme weather, even the slower tracking of hurricanes, once they hit the land, like we saw with Florence here and Harvey in Texas, is being attributed to a warming climate. We've been told we can't stop global warming. We can only slow it down. Natural gas is better than coal, but renewal, renewable energy and conservation are the ways to go for a healthier, more livable future. This is not my line, but it struck a note with me. The Stone Age didn't end because our ancestors ran out of stone. They found a better way. Well, we've already found a better way to manage our future energy needs. It's time for the fossil fuel age to end. Please consider joining Alaman's County and opposing the MVP South Gate Project. I can provide you with copies of their resolution if you'd like to have that.
I think we have a copy of it. And I'll ask the council after we finish talking if they want to bring that up. We do not vote on things as a regular basis that's not on our agenda. If we did something like that, it would be, the earliest would be next month.
I understand that completely. We hope that you will, will take that and take that step. And yes, we understand that, that again, this resolution carries no weight, but at[1776.49] but at least with, with, it does get the attention of FERC, the organizing body, and it also gets the attention of the governor's office, of the attorney general's office, if more and more of the communities and counties say, no, this is not what, what North Carolina wants or needs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good way. Good speech. Anyone else? Now I'll go to Keith. Have you got anything for us?
I've just made an error.
Yes, sir.
And I want to talk to you about two little edits that the city of Meven made last night on this ABC thing. And I don't know if your agenda had it in there or not. But, but, but the one that's published here didn't have the edits in it, and I just think the motion ought to reflect as amended by the city of Meven. Two edits came in last Thursday, and I wasn't here after last Monday, and I was sick yesterday, and that's why it was not corrected on your, on the agenda package. On paragraph four, page twenty-nine of thirty-two, you see where I am? The last sentence in the first paragraph of section four. The chairperson may serve no more than two consecutive terms. That was deleted. I suggested that they may have a term limit from the chairperson, not for any reason other than just to rotate through the person running the meetings. They don't go, my chairperson doesn't have any more vote than anybody else. And they elected, and I support just the deletion of it. The next edit was in paragraph five. It now reads in the first sentence, revenue sharing and profit distribution shall, here's the new edit, continue in the same manner and in the same proportions as are currently in effect as set forth in paragraph one above. Paragraph one sets out how it got to sixty-five and twenty and fifteen percent. And that's, that's an accurate statement as well as the other edit. I don't, I don't have any problem with either one of that. But I thought that your motion ought to reflect as amended.
Okay, questions for Keith? Chip, start with you.
No questions.
Lee, have you got any questions?
I do. So Keith, I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading, what was the reason Meven wanted to delete the chair from serving two consecutive or term limits on the chair?
It was something I proposed last October, and not until they, and we've talked about it, the lawyers and I have talked about it. It wasn't even for any reason that I proposed it other than just power rotation. It's not, the, the, one vote doesn't have any more power than another vote. They wouldn't take it out. I, I don't have any problem with it about not having a term limit on the chairperson's role.
Okay.
You're already elected for a term anyway, and so.
Yeah. Okay. I was just curious.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, sir, I don't.
My understanding that the current chairperson was a Mevenite?
Not now.
No.
This way, Brooks, now.
Larry's the administrative.
Yeah.
Larry's not, well, Larry's not a lord anymore.
Who?
Chip Fahey.
And?
A Meven.
A Meven, okay.
I mean, there's a part of me that finds it interesting that Meven took the limit, limit on consecutive terms out while they're, they have the sitting chairperson, but-
They're also getting the board to vote on it.
Annually. And, so it cycles it up more.
They're appointed annually.
Okay.
By themselves. Now, let's go procedure-wise. How do we handle this procedurally?
I would just fix the motion, have someone restate the motion, approve, adopt the resolution as amended.
Alright, who made the original motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the, the resolution with the amended changes.
And who seconded it?
I think I seconded it, yeah, and I'll second that as well.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye. All opposed likewise.
I apologize, Eric, Mayor, I don't-
No problem. I had it right here in front of me, and I didn't even look at it.
I had it in front of me too. We gotta talk about the history.
Aaron, have you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Darcy?
No, sir.
Melody?
Sir.
I would say that, and for Perry and Jeff, I would support a resolution. Would it come before this council? No, sir.
I do, I do. Just real quick, small area downtown plan, any progress?
The RFPs?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that we actually put it out for RFPs, was it last week?
It's out there. I'm getting phone calls.
Yeah, and-
Okay, good.
I think, I think actually between Nathan, Frank, and myself, we should have several to consider. So it looks like we will have someone, you know, to look into it.
When that was sent out, were they sent out to solely engineering firms or architectural firms as well who can manage and put together a total concept package along with infrastructure?
Well, we've got a list serve through UNC. That, that's a very heavily traveled viewed list serve, so a lot of the conversations that we've had with individuals, they saw it on there. I'm not sure if he put it in the paper.
Probably not, but it's out there. I've had two different engineering firms contact me today.
Good.
Nothing similar.
So, real quick, with DOT holding up repaving of the downtown, and it looks like most of eighty-seven at this point, where, how far is this plan gonna extend out? Is it gonna extend down eighty-seven a little bit to kind of look at the corridor slightly before you get into downtown?
Rather than cite something incorrectly, I'll send you guys a copy of the request for proposals.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious. It's just, it's just a question, because DOT obviously is, is an integral part of this because they halted pavement, repaving eighty-seven from Bethany Church all the way up to Frank's Jewelry. I thought they were going to continue with that outside the downtown area and just hold the downtown, but now they're kind of holding the entire repave that, from what I understand. So I'm just wondering how much of this plan is going to encompass this area where DOT is holding up until we get this plan in place, and they're helping to fund it, which is even better. Just, just curious.
I'm just, it was identified in the wording, but I'm with Frankie. It'd probably be easier if we send you the wording, so you can kind of see a description of what areas.
And this is, this is gonna be a big deal for us. This is really gonna shape our downtown and our, you know, our corridoring in, and this is huge. We got wayfinding program that's being put in place right now. A pose-up now? Yeah. For parking signs. Yeah. For along. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Frankie, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the Thursday at seven, this come Thursday night, everybody remember that, it's seven o'clock downtown. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
I need a second. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.